Shortly. I apologize about the time delay, but some of the clocks seem to be all messed up wherever we're at, so. We aren't starting 25 minutes early, I can promise you that. All right, Mr. Johnson's here. Commissioner Perusch, okay. We're gonna call the September 25th, 2017 Royal Oak City Commission meeting to order. We're gonna start with an invocation given by Commissioner Dubach, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
As we gather this evening to conduct the business of our city, let us, as always, strive to be the best version of ourselves that we can be. In these challenging and divisive times, let us represent the best of our community by exemplifying empathy, open-mindedness, patience, vision, inclusion, thoughtfulness, and compassion. As a community, let's reject angry rhetoric and mudslinging, and instead, may we express our differences respectfully and be ever mindful of the fact that we are all here together for the same reason. We love our community. We've met our homes here, we've raised or are raising our families here, we plan our parks and we walk on our sidewalks, and we cherish our neighborhoods and the quality of life that we've all built together. And we're all deeply personally committed to fostering a strong, healthy city for current and future generations. Let us see the best and bring out the best in each other, and may we be successful in all these endeavors this evening. Amen.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, that brings us to item number four tonight, public comment. Just a few notes before we commence. The City Commission values and relies on input from our fellow citizens to make decisions. Now's the time set aside for the public to address the City Commission on any city-related issues, both on the agenda and not. I ask that comments be directed to the City Commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners. Public comment is the only time tonight to address the City Commission on agenda items, as there are no other public hearings for this evening. If you wish to speak tonight, wait till you're recognized by me, the mayor. Come up to the podium. Don't forget to state your name and address for the record. And be mindful that the City Commission does want to hear from everyone here tonight, so comments are limited to five minutes or less. And there's a timer at the podium to help you with that. If you don't wish to speak tonight, please don't hesitate at any time to email or call the City Commission with your comments. It gives us an opportunity to reply personally to you. Please note that City Commission will not respond directly to questions during public comment. However, we are taking notes, and we'll address questions when the agenda topic is discussed. And our city manager is also taking copious note, so if something isn't on the agenda tonight, you bring something up, you know, we follow up or the city manager follows up to make sure those issues are addressed and taken care of. So with that, who's first tonight? Oh, thank you, Mr. Harrison. I thought I got all dressed up for the dance and no one was here to take me out.
Hate to see the lack of critical thinking at the planning commission level and at this commission level is disturbing. Was given the land for a dollar, and to my understanding, is not getting any gap money. Burton Katzman is paying a dollar, a million dollars, I beg your pardon, for the property at Sixth and Main, and asking for an 80 percent TIF reimbursement for 10 years, which I understand. But, the Boji Group is getting five and a half million dollars upfront, which would pay for 275 more parking spaces in the structure. There was a January 7, 2015, letter from Rich and Associates to the Boji Group, based on a 600-space structure, which is now 565 spaces. It urged adding one more level to bring the total capacity to 690 spaces. They stated, "This option should be seriously considered, given the parking shortages projected for the next five years." They cited a 276-space deficit in the surrounding area, even with the civic center structure and the new structure at Second and Center. Now, at the planning commission meeting on the 12th of September, the Boji Group cited conclusions from a new traffic study and an updated parking study. The commission proceeded without reviewing the studies or even asking questions about the studies. How is it that Rich and Associates is now claiming that there will be a parking surplus? Nobody asked. How does, how does adding 565, excuse me, parking spaces in the structure with the entrance drive on 11 Mile and Main, how does that improve the intersection rating from a D to a C? And nobody asked. What type of restaurant will be in the building without a liquor license or exterior entrance? And nobody asked. You know, we have experience with restaurants in office buildings. The first federal building over on Lafayette and Fourth had a subsidized restaurant, an half-hour lunch. Employees didn't, didn't have time to shop at noon. When that building was first proposed, everybody was all giddy, "Oh, we're gonna get all these office people downtown." And then additionally, the Strasburg development over on Main was approved for retail, but is now essentially all restaurant. And the question is, when Boji comes back and asks for a liquor license, are you gonna give it to him? One of the commissioners cited the criteria for approving a site plan is that the project, quote, "shall do no harm to the surrounding area." Relocating City Hall and the police station to the farmer's market lot will harm the farmer's market. Deleting two-hour parking, raising fees, and implementing a special assessment to the CBD property owners for parking does harm the surrounding area businesses. I keep, when I was on the DDA, I kept saying, landlords do not pay taxes, they collect taxes, just like retail collects sales tax. The bottom line is that the city should be held to the same standard as others. Thank you.
Who's next? I see, yeah, yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Kathleen Matthews. Live in Mandalay and Royal Oak. Been there for 50 years.
Do you have the house number for Mandalay?
4332 Mandalay. And I'm here to talk about the pickleball court at Upton Park.
Thank you. Are these the same set of pictures?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll pass those right, pass these left. Good call.
This is what goes on, on our street, in front of our houses, every day, six to eight hours a day, seven days a week. The cars are there, they're all over the place. They come in the morning, they padlock the court at night, and then unlock it in the morning. I thought this was a public park, but it was, our kids always played there. And from when we've been living here, I've, to me, I see the new ones coming in as the third generation. And we've always had, they've always been able to play in the park. They now have signs, no soccer, no, the children can't do anything. And the boy, and the kids, they're left to play in the street, right down between all the cars that are parked on both sides of the streets. We can't get in and out of our driveways. And it's just, when we first moved here, when you lived, when anyone wanted to do anything, you got a note, you got a card in the mail, and you filled it out, and then you came down here to listen to what they were gonna want it to, to do. And if you had any objections or whatever, you could do that. No one ever told us they were gonna put a pickleball court in there. And it's, you can see the sign, it says, "Pickleball only." And that, and there's some profanity sometimes. And we just wanna know what you think you could do, what you can do about this. We don't know who gave them the right, I guess, to say, to take over the, over that tennis court, is what it originally was. And when it was built, they used, the city used to come and flood it in the winter for the kids to ice skate. And that, now the kids aren't even allowed in there. So, I just wanted to see what we can do about it.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Thank you for the pictures, too. It's very helpful to have an illustration as well.
How are you this evening?
Good.
I live on the same street with Kay, and I have been there for 15 years.
Can we get your name and address real quick for the record?
My name is Jessica Sable, and I live at 4316 Mandalay. A year ago, I wrote this letter when we were asked on what we were going to do with the monies from Arts Beats and Eats and where it was gonna be allotted to. And this was one letter that I had written in suggestion practically almost exactly to the day a year ago, so I'm gonna read that to you. It says, "My family and I have lived across the street from Upton Park for more than 12 years. And in the 12 years we have lived there, we have had two boys, who are now eight and 12. We have had, not been able to let our boys play at the play structure for the most of their lives, finding that the cats, neighborhood cats like to use it as a litter box. There's bees, hives, and broken structure parts on the playscape itself. It has made enjoying the park across the street from our house not very much enjoyable. We've talked to a few people with Parks and Rec, and they've said that they would discuss this. When we, as the taxpayers, leave it to the city officials to allot money for what is needed, it seems that the past 12 years, our Upton Park has gone not on the table for discussion. Maybe instead of building such things around downtown, take into consideration the people at the north end of Royal Oak. I love my city, I love it here in Royal Oak, and I wouldn't wanna raise my kids anywhere else. It has bothered me, and I hope that something we can do would be able to make that better. I've noticed our park also becomes a parking lot for the Dream Cruise, which I guess we all have to find somewhere to park to enjoy the Dream Cruise. But it is an inconvenience to have to see that our park is being used as a parking lot. Also, I had mentioned a year ago in regards to the pickleball and the parking, maybe consideration to the residents and park on the park side and not the resident side would be a very good observation on their part. Locking it, I think, is absolutely ridiculous, taking away from the residents who may want to enjoy pickleball. Not necessarily saying that we have to have tennis courts or anything of that sort, but being able to be able to utilize something that is in our neighborhood would be nice. It was never brought to our attention that they were going to take over this. It just showed up. They did send flyers around, they did try to attempt, but then, all of a sudden, they started locking it, and nobody wanted to take the keys to open it when necessary, if there were people who were interested in using the pickle paddle. The noise is somewhat obtrusive, but again, you know, we want people to enjoy our neighborhood, and we wanna enjoy our neighborhood also. But I, as a parent and raising my children, it seems like Upton's park has gone downhill. We have a spider that's been there for who knows how many years. And it looks like lead paint, we don't know that, but wooden structure, and most of the structures are updated throughout the parks. And so, I would like, as a concerned citizen, now that my kids are now not at the age, but for the kids that are coming into the neighborhood to be able to enjoy our park. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sable. Ms. Hennessy. I'm sorry, I called Ms. Hennessy.
Here in Commissioners, Carol Hennessy, 258 East Up My Road. Veterans Day Saturday, November 11th is approaching, and I wanted to let you know about some activities we'll be having. This year, the recruiting office in Madison Heights in the city of Royal Oak will be putting on a 22-mile ruck march. I'd ask, what's a ruck march? Well, we're gonna be asking our walkers and runners to wear backpacks. The 22 stands for 22 veterans that commit suicide every day. And then we're asking the runners or walkers in their backpacks to either have 22 pounds or 22 items in their backpack while they're walking or running. This is a sample of some of the things, like bars of soap, shampoo, cream rinse, things that you might get at the hotel, or travel size items, toothbrushes, toothpaste, hard candies, anything like that, that you think, you know, you could carry in a backpack. You could also do canned goods, or cereals, dried foods, things like that, that would last a while. We're going to be taking all the toiletries to the VA Hospital in Detroit. The American Legion will be taking it to them. And then, the food items will be donated to the pantry that the veterans have in Macomb County. We tried to find one in Oakland County, but I guess they don't have one. They all use the Macomb one. So, those are the two places we would be donating all this. And the, if you don't wanna run or walk, you can just donate any of these items for our veterans. Another thing would be like crackers, hot chocolate packets, Kleenexes, pocket calendars, different things like that would be great. We'll be having more information at the next meeting, but the run will start at 9:30 a.m. by the Star Dream, right outside here, and that'll be on November the 11th, a Saturday, Veterans Day. And it will end at the VFW parking lot on the east side of the VFW. And at that point, they'll be able to drop off everything in their backpacks in the parking lot. And then from there, everyone that is running and walking will join in with the veterans and the honor guard from the VFW and walk down Troy Street to the monument for the Veterans Day service. And there will be a fee of $10 for 18 and over, and under 18, it'll be $5. And that money will be donated to the World War II Monument Project. And we're kinda charging just a minimal amount so that we know how many runners we're gonna have, so we have some kind of idea on what to count on, so. And then after the run, the runners will follow the honor guard from the VFW to the service. And at the service, we'll be welcoming home our Vietnam veterans again. And at that time, Senator Marty Nollenberg will be here to present pins to our Vietnam veterans that didn't receive them. We will be also having the gentlemen songsters singing during the service, and the students from Royal Oak High School playing taps, and then the 9th Kentucky, 9th Kentucky Infantry will be doing the rifle salute. We hope you will all attend and honor our veterans and thank them for all you have done, they have done for us. If you need more information, you can please, you can call me at 248-543-8420 about the service, and Judy Davids at the city manager's office at 246, I mean, yeah, 248-246-3200 for the race. And everyone's welcome to come, more the merrier. And we wanna welcome back our Vietnam veterans again that got neglected when they came back at first. And I think it'll be a nice event, and I'm sorry, I'm getting choked up, but it's near and dear to my heart, so, thank you.
Carol said it was 22 miles, it's 2.2 miles. Guess what, 22 miles.
I'm sorry. I should've brought my reading glasses, the dot. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions from Ms. Hennessy? Thank you very much. 2.2 sounds much more manageable. All right, who's next? Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name's Ken Collins, and I live at 4336 Mandalay, and I'm here to talk about the situation in Upton Park, particularly with pickleball, and particularly with the pickleball noise. I would like to make reference to, this was coincidence, but last weekend, New York Times had an article, which is not entirely pertinent, but does have some meaning for our situation, entitled "How Parks Lose Their Playfulness." And I moved here in 1974, okay? And before I bought the house, before I ever made a payment, I saw the play structure. And I think at the time, it was just being built. So I made calls to the city, and I said, "What's going to be done with that?" One of my big concerns, for example, is are they going to put a parking lot in there? Are they gonna put lights on this thing? You know, what's gonna happen? How is it gonna be expanded? And I was told that, under no circumstances, this is going to be a multipurpose play facility, and that was it. There were no further plans for that, okay? Which was great. And for many years, the use of the park was great. I mean, there's problems. You live by a park, you're gonna have some problems. You're gonna have, you know, kids and drugs and drinking and things like that, but really, really, very minimal. Sometimes, the play facility, in the springtime, I don't know if you're familiar with Upton Park, but it floods. And so, in the springtime, the only dry place the kids have to play is that play facility. They go in there, and it's raised, and it's concrete, so that's the only thing they can do. And they played, you know, occasionally tennis, not much, but basketball, rollerblading, hockey, a lot of hockey in the wintertime, but in the summertime, they would play with tennis balls and, and their skates. And, and as many as 25 and 30 kids in there at a time. So it was quite heavily used. And unsupervised. Nobody had to chuck up on them, or, I never, never had occasion to complain about the kids. And these are mostly middle school and high school kids, but I don't think anyone ever had a reason to complain about the kids in there for all those years. And then, the, the facility began to be neglected. Suddenly, it was no longer, the weeds weren't being cut around the outside, and they were becoming trees. And inside, there's cracks, and they were growing up. And so I took it on myself to go down there with my weed whacker and my backpack blower and a few gallons of Roundup, and keep the place clean. You know, I know at the same time, the DPS was losing employees like crazy, so I figured that was part of the cutback. But that went on and on, but, you know, as they put employees back, nothing changed. And then one day, I don't, I think somebody didn't like the fact that the facility still looked pretty good. And it was padlocked, and it stayed padlocked for a couple of years. And all the weeds grew back, because I couldn't get in there to take care of them, and pick up the trash, and so on and so forth. So, you know, now we've got a situation where suddenly, as has already been mentioned, without notice to us at all, and we get lots of notice on most things, when, when the city decided they wanted to run a TV camera down the sewer, we got hang tags, we got mailings, we got mentions on the city website, we got all kinds of stuff. But this facility, nothing. Just one day, a whole bunch of people, I don't know where they're from, showed up and started painting and doing all kinds of things, and putting up signs that said, "No anything but what we wanna do." Okay? They took over, that's it. So now, they have eight pickleball courts there. Each one holds four players, that's 32 people. They all arrive individually in cars, okay? So that's a lot of parking spaces. And it's not 32 every single time that they show up, but they are there seven days a week. As somebody said, eight to 12 hours per day, when most, if not all, of the parking spaces on Mandalay are taken by these people, whoever they are. And they play pickleball, and, and that's a nuisance. But the big nuisance is the unbelievable noise that's made by a very hard plastic ball being struck by a very hard racket. These are not strung rackets like tennis rackets or tennis balls or something like that. They are both very hard, and that noise travels. And I'm not an acoustical engineer, and I know that decibels are not the only thing that counts. It's the character of the noise, and, and that noise is horrific. Now that I'm retired, I'm home a lot more than I used to be, so I get to listen to this all day long, and well, sometimes they're there after dark. I don't know how they do that, okay? Because there are no lights, there's a street light nearby, okay? And I have to listen to that, and it's maddening. It drives you, the noise will drive you right out of your mind. It's, you know, constant, "pock, pock, pock, pock." And, and when you get 20 or 30 people doing that at the same time, and they stand very close together, so that these things are, you know, they're numerous noises per second. It'd be kinda like having a bunch of roofers with nail guns on the house next door to you, seven days a week, 12 hours a day.
Mr. Collins, I'm gonna need to have you finish up real quick here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No worries.
I looked once and, and lost my place, okay? I'm concerned about the, the noise level, and, and that, and I think something really needs to be done about that, because some of us just cannot tolerate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Who's next? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Mayor Pro temp and Board of Commissioners. My name is Pastor DeShante Irvin, and I'm pastoring Live Ministries, which is located at 3500 Maris, inside of the Senior Community Center. And just wanted to take time tonight to come out and formally introduce myself to you all, and let you know that we are, or myself and the church are here for you, for this community, and for the youth of Royal Oak. And I'm looking forward to sending you all a more informative email so that you can know who we are and what we're about. Bless you.
Thank you, Pastor Irvin, and welcome to Royal Oak. We're glad to have you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Dubach. You're not gonna give away your secret recipe, are you?
I know.
All right, next.
I'm Mark Schuster, 413 West Webster. And I am here to talk positively about the art piece and mural that River Rouge has placed on their side wall to improve the appearance of the drab gray that was there between the two buildings. It was a fantastic, it is a fantastic piece of art. It was tremendous to be able to watch the process as Freddie Diaz was out there for a bit of two weeks, if not close to three, up on a scaffolding and up and down grabbing a different color of spray paint and standing back, and just the, the work that went into that. So it did kind of come as a surprise, as it was cited as an ordinance violation, which, kind of on a secondary topic, seems like such a tremendous waste of resources at all levels, both for the city, the building owner, the business owner, Freddie, all the time commitment that all these people have had to put in beyond beautifying the side of the building to jump through all the hoops, so to speak. But the, the extra hours where especially Freddie could've been doing another art project, time taken away from both the landlord and the business owner for what, what they had to do, making multiple meetings. Unfortunately, the first commission for the arts meeting had to be postponed because they didn't have a quorum, so people that have taken time out of their schedules to go to those meetings and then show up for this one. So, just wanna encourage a positive vote for that, and because it is a really wonderful piece of art. Thank you.
Young man in the back, is that Mr. Colo?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. Brandon Colo, 600 East Hudson Avenue. I came here tonight to talk about the development at 600 North Main. About a month ago, you guys had a pretty busy meeting. I think everyone left here about 1:30 in the morning. And public comment went to about 10:30 at night. I think one really interesting part of that public comment was a citizen who stood up, who was the, I believe she's the president of the association at the senior center, the senior co-op, right there on Main Street. And she spoke about parking and how they use 30 spots over at that, the existing site. So when considering this development tonight, I think it's really important to remember and ask the developer to look at how we are making sure that senior citizens in that area who utilize that parking spot, those parking spots, will be able to continue to receive parking, which is all part of a larger conversation in the community about growing, you know, aging in place. Talking to a lot of community members over the last couple of months, you know, that everyone wants to stay in Royal Oak. So I think that's a larger discussion that we should have. I know the Parks and Recs Board has absorbed the senior commission, and I hope that they really take this up seriously in the next couple of months here. And with that being said, too, it's, it's interesting listening to our neighbors talk about Upton Park here. I think it really pushes the need to have better neighborhood associations here in Royal Oak. I think it really, uh, pushes the need to have better, um, neighborhood associations here in Royal Oak. Um, I know my neighborhood went through the same thing. We all met about two years ago and I talked to you about development in my backyard and we were very loosely organized. So, uh, it's nice to see people get together and have a mechanism to talk to the city. So with that, uh, thank you and good night.
Thank you, Mr. Colo. Who's next? Ma'am, I think you had your hand up. Do you wanna say anything?
You know what? I'll, I'll, you know, you have said.
Okay, okay. Perfect. Okay, anybody else? Going once, going twice? Okay, we're gonna bring the meeting back up here to the side of the table. Which brings us to the approval of the agenda. Mr. Marley?
I'll move the approval of the agenda as presented.
Your motion by Commissioner Marley, support by Commissioner Douglas. Any discussion? Okay, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor. Oh, Commissioner Perush?
I can't remember the procedure that we do. If we wanna add, just to add the pickleball issue to this agenda, just briefly, not to have a huge discussion about it, but maybe just to get it moving in the right direction.
You can do it now.
Okay, can we add that to the agenda? Anybody object?
Commissioner Marley?
Since these folks are here and I've seen Mr. Gazetti in the building, I don't know if he still is, can we add it to, uh, follow the consent agenda?
Okay, we'll put pickleball. So we have a amended motion by Commissioner Marley for the agenda plus adding as six point five, uh, discussion on pickleball. Is there support?
Yes.
Supported by Commissioner Perush? Okay. Everyone understand the agenda? Any further discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. That brings us to item number six, the consent agenda, uh, which consists of city commission meeting minutes from August twenty-eighth and September eleventh, two thousand seventeen, approval of appointments committee rotation, claims September fifteenth and September twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen, declaration and disposal of surplus property, approval of contract extension for janitorial services at the public library, award of contract for John Lindell Ice Arena for roof repairs, and approval of tri-party agreement Equin Acquisitions R O L L C. Is there a motion? Someone motioned by Commissioner Polton. Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Perush. Any discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. That brings us to item number six point five, I guess we'll call it, uh, discussion on pickleball. Um, we heard some comments from public comment tonight. Maybe, Mr. Gazetti, you could, uh, kinda bring the commission up to speed from a Parks and Recreation perspective as it relates to some of the concerns expressed tonight by our fellow residents.
Uh, yeah, Mayor Fournier and members of the commission, um, about seven years ago, six years ago, um, some of the pickleball people in Royal Oak came to Parks and Rec Board about starting this new activity called Pickleball. And their proposal was for Whittier Park and, um, because that court was identified, there wasn't a lot of activity in the park. There was some activity, obviously, there's activity in every park. And at the time, the, uh, Parks and Rec recommending the construction of pickleball facility at Whittier. Well, as, over the years, pickleball has taken off even more and more. Everybody knows how popular it is. And then, we talked about adding a second facility. Went back to Parks and Rec, I think Upton's been open for three years now and I, it might be longer, it might be shorter, I'm not really sure. But I, about three years ago, went back to, um, the Parks and Rec Board about adding a second facility. And one of the stipulations was, you know, all of our volunteers in pickleball, they would be self-sufficient. It, no monies would be directed from Parks and Forestry to maintain or to make improvements to these parks. So they did fundraisers, similar to our dog parks, similar to the nature society. They do fundraisers and they were able to, uh, construct the facility at Upton. Um, you know, we do, I heard, um, the comment about, uh, we were have, trying to keep the facility open because we don't have park attendants in any of our parks anymore. Our, our parks are really maintained or a lot of volunteerism goes into it. So they do open and close the facility. It does say pickleball only, just like our tennis facility is really just for tennis also. We don't want roller blades on the, on the paint and on the facilities or shooting pucks or sticks into the netting. So we tried to stay open during park hours, which I believe are nine to nine at Upton. Um, but we had so much vandalism there this year. We, when we had it open full-time, the nets were cut. There was, um, like foam stuck in the locks so we couldn't open the locks. So then we went to combination locks. Um, we, there's a lot of broken bottles, things of that nature. There was paint, so we had to repaint. So what we did was similar, we know that the popular times for pickleball are nine to noon in the mornings for the seniors and then after work from six until the park closes at nine. So those were the hours that we were staying open. Uh, instead of being open, it seemed like a lot of the vandalism was happening in the afternoon when there was nobody there. So we made a decision, um, just to open them in the morning and in the evenings. Um, you know, I agree, you know, that, there's definitely, I mean, there's definitely a noise when that paddle hits the ball. I mean, it's undeniable. And, um, they did come out this year and we went to a new noise reduction ball. It just came out in two thousand seventeen, but you can still hear it. And it is a clucking or plucking sound that, you know, it can be, I mean, I, I don't doubt it can be, uh, you know, annoying. Um, we looked at, you know, when we looked at different facilities, where to put these, um, you know, Whittier was identified, um, Upton was identified, Dickinson. And the decision was made again that, you know, Upton would be one of the better ones. And part of the reasoning was, if you go to Upton Park, there's no baseball fields, there's no soccer fields, and that playground structure is dilapidated. And I've been trying for three years to get a new playground structure there. Think, because it was in such poor condition. And we're gonna try again this year, um, with capital improvements. So based on the, and with Upton School being there, there were still places for the kids to shoot baskets, play softball or T-ball, as well as there's a soccer field there in the fall and in the spring. And you can use the school parking lot. So every one of our parks, except Memorial and Warden, we have major parking problems. That's the problem with, or one of the challenges with older parks and neighborhoods. We have challenges at, uh, Kenwood, Exchange, Red Run. And, and you've heard, you've heard complaints from residents in the past and justify it be so where soccer comes in and they park up and down the soccer, up and down the streets for their soccer games. So the parking is definitely an issue, but it's also an issue at, you know, thirty other parks too. So if there's something specific I can try to address, I'm more than happy to.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I, I guess perhaps describe the hour issue again in terms of when the park is actually open. I drove through that area and I'm not sure exactly why, within the last month. It was during the day, it probably was sometime around the middle of the day. And I was stunned at the number of number-one players who were there and the number of cars. It was difficult for me to navigate to get through for wherever I was going. Um, and so it, it, I think you said that the, the hours that it's most popular are from, are in the morning, when seniors play from nine to noon and then after work.
Right.
Are, is that consistent with what happens at Whittier as well? Or is the mix a little bit different at, at Whittier?
And there's no perfect science. So, cause on the weekends, and I'm sure the residents can attest to this, it's probably busy from nine AM to nine PM, okay? But in the afternoon, it gets hot. So the seniors that are playing, they like to play nine to noon. And then, people that work or are semi-retired, they do like to play after work as, as the temperatures get cooler. So the afternoon, it's almost like going to a golf course. You can always get on a golf course at one o'clock in the afternoon. And there's a reason for that. So with, between the heat and people working and things of that nature.
But there is no lights over, over the pickleball court. So when it, is it's getting darker earlier, I'm assuming that it's, technically, it's open until nine, but you're not gonna be able to see the ball at nine o'clock at night.
No, right, correct.
Tonight, for example.
Right. Yeah, you're looking during prime summer seasons of June, July, and August when it's, you know, it, it, it has to be shut down when the park shuts down. And same thing at Whittier too.
When the residents presented a series of complaints, at least it was a couple of residents who lived along, at least one side street along Whittier. This issue went back to the Parks and Rec Board for their recommendations as to whether they, now they could tweak the hours or tweak the parking issue or, you know, do something. Um, would it be appropriate for this issue to go back to them again to see if they can brainstorm and see if they can come up with any solutions as to how to handle some of these issues?
I would, October fifth is our next Parks and Rec meeting. So I think we, we can easily put that on the agenda and talk about possible solutions or, like you said, trimming back the hours. Um, I heard the one lady talk, I, I didn't, I believe there's parking on both sides of the street. Maybe that's something with the parking committee where we just go on the park side like they were alluding to for safety reasons.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it always, it always surprises me, and more so at Red Run is a good example. They'd rather park on the side streets at Red Run and you got Churchill's parking lot, which is closer to the soccer fields, but yet they still park in the street. And I, I just can never gra- quite grasp that concept. Or on Gerard, where Red Run Country Club. If you park there, you're just as close. For some reason, they gotta park on the streets and we ask them and we send out emails and we ask them, you know, please, to Royssa, to have your, um, players and parents park on Gerard or in Churchill Parking Lot.
Mm-hmm.
And many do, and it's gotten better, but it, it's still an issue. So, yeah, I'm sorry. So October fifth, seven o'clock at the Senior Center, um, we will be having a Parks and Rec meeting.
Yeah, I would think a, a parking solution, either like one side of the street or permit parking only on one side of the street or... We've had an awful lot of parking solutions thrown out for various events that happened for the city. Another, this doesn't come before your board, Parks and Rec, but in terms of the, the dream cruise, um, that's another thing that the neighborhood might wanna consider because they, I think, are just far enough away from the dream cruise that they're not into the mandatory no parking unless you have a permit section. But that's something that they may wanna consider applying for so that during, at least during the dream cruise time. But that's separate from the Parks and Recreation issue. But that option is out there. So that, that's it. Those are my thoughts.
Mr. Dubut?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so first off, Upton Park is at the top of our list with regard to a new play structure, correct?
It's at the top of my list, yes, sir.
Cause I feel like we've had this conversation before about Upton Park. So I think that's something that we're all aware of, needs to be addressed.
In a typical, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but, um, a playground structure of that, for that size park would be similar to the one we put at Optimus Park. And that was in the neighborhood of thirty-five thousand.
Okay. Okay, well, I think that's probably a discussion to be had when we're, uh, we're talking about some future expenditures. Um, at Whittier, which is, I think, much more heavily programmed, we have soccer there. We have, which is, you know, right next to my house. We have soccer, basketball, we have the pickleball courts there, uh, a large play structure and swing sets and things. And, uh, there's always activity at Whittier. We, uh, had installed the angle parking on the park side of the park. Is that, would that be a helpful solution in this scenario? And is that something that could be, we might wanna consider?
That would be a wonderful solution at, uh, Upton as well as, um, a few of our other parks that are heavily programmed, but yet are on the smaller side. And again, I always refer to Exchange and Kenwood. Cause those are heavily programmed. And again, it's the same issues with, with the parking on the side streets and along the park, so.
And I, and I know that you, you live in this world all the time where it's a conundrum where we want our parks full of people enjoying themselves of all ages. And I think that's what we all want. Um, but we do wanna work in good faith to alleviate, you know, some of the nuisances that come with living next to a park, which is, as one gentleman said, just part of living next to a park. Uh, so we're happy to work in good faith. It has, did the noise reduction make any improvement, the product?
I personally think it is, people will say, you know, but it, again, when there's eight courts and there's, you know, eight balls and balls are being hit back and forth. It, I, um, in fact, what I'll try to do before the next meeting is get the old ball and the reduced noise ball at the Parks and Rec meeting. So I can probably find both, samples of both. Um, but again, it, it makes a difference, but you can still hear it. I mean, it's, you know, it's just like, you know, baseballs or, or the other one is, is the constant basketball on our basketball courts. You know, we have full-size basketball courts where constant basketball games going on. And the bouncing of that ball, if you live on that street, again, that's annoying. That's a constant, so, um, yeah, active activities make noise.
Sure. I'll just put a hoop for my son and my neighbors, I'm sure, are, are loving it. Unless he's like, um, so, uh, how, what is our relationship with the, the pickleball associations? I, there's, I understand that when there's a, a nuisance like this, there's frustration, but there's a tendency to be like, oh, these pickleball people. But having gone there and visited folks, at least at the Whittier Park, it's a lot of Royal Oakers. It's not like, you know, outsiders or something. It's, it's folks that live here in the community and particularly seniors and it's a activity for seniors to get out and get active. So it's a really positive activity. Um, but what, what's our relationship with the, uh, the association? That what can we do as far as like being a good neighbor, uh, you know, being good sport and considering the, the neighbors when parking or, or any other, other issues that are coming up?
And, and one, communication. And we do communicate with them all the time. And you're right, when pickleball first started, we were at the forefront of these pickleball facilities, Whittier, and we were getting more non-residents, especially at Whittier, because no other city was, had pickleball courts yet. Now, the time has gone by, Troy has courts, Madison Heights, Huntington Woods. And there's other cities that are, are investing in pickleball because they see how popular it is. And consequently, their tennis programs aren't doing as well as they used to. So it's been a change in what people are doing for activities. And a lot of these seniors that play pickleball are your old tennis players, you know, back twenty years ago, so. Um, but we talk, I mean, I talked to, they, they have, uh, you know, they're like, I, again, I compare them to the nature society, ROSL, Royssa. They have a group of volunteers that go and maintain the courts. They do fundraisers, they do that tournament at Whittier. Those monies are used strictly for those two courts. They are not used for anything else. Nobody's getting paid. The port of Johns, the paint, the netting, the vandalism that occurred, they had money to make the repairs. So all those monies do go back into the program. Um, they, but they have a board. Uh, I think it's a, uh, it has seven members on it and only one of them's a non-resident. The other six are residents. And when, like I said, I, I think you're, now that it's growing in popularity, you're seeing more residents that are playing pickleball. Um, they offered six lessons in May and June at Upton for the residents. I believe they sent flyers or they told me that they put flyers out there into the neighborhood to try to, you know, if we recruit people and they like it, they're gonna be a proponent of pickleball. We've run, uh, kids' lessons with Kevin Freezen from Upton Elementary School. And we've tried to get the kids more involved in pickleball, so. So it's not like, you know, they wanna just take over that facility. I mean, you know, just for, well, it is just for pickleball, but, you know, they do wanna get other people and include other people involved in the sport. They're, they're the biggest promoters of it. So as they get older, they're playing less and less. You know, some of the people that we first met six, seven years ago aren't even playing anymore because they just physically can't, so, but.
Okay, so, I, again, I think there's, there's a space to, to work in good faith to, to alleviate some of the nuisance, particularly the parking. When we did the, the angle parking on Whittier, it was controversial. People were really worried about, oh, now there's gonna be parking along the street, even though it was already there. Now we're just getting cars in more efficiently so you can actually pass by. People use it and, and I think residents are really happy with it. So that might be something to consider going forward. Um, and, yeah, pickleball is, you know, that, I lived next to the court at Whittier for, for a few years and, you know, the popping is whatever we can do to reduce the noise, but.
Right. And there are some, there are some other, um, some other alternatives or solutions out there, but they do have a price tag on it too. They do make a noise reduction screening that's thicker. Again, that's good and bad. It does, you know, the, the noise is still gonna go above and beyond the fence. But this noise reduction, it's very popular in Florida where they had, where pickleball started. And it's called, um, acoustic, acoustic fencing. And it's a screening that goes around. Bad part is, you can't see through it. You're not gonna be see, able to see what's inside, what's going on inside the courts. So that is the, the downside of it. Now, maybe you do three, three of the sections, maybe not the section that faces Upton, you know? I don't know. I, I don't have the answer right now. But there are some solutions out there too.
Okay.
There is a price tag to that too.
Right.
Commissioner Marley?
One more time, what was the date of the next Parks and, Parks Rec Senior Farmers Market Committee meeting?
Thursday, October fifth.
All of those things, right?
Yeah, um, seven PM.
At?
At the Mahaney Mining Senior Center.
Okay. Um, it's not conflicting with that gentleman's church that we just heard about?
No, I, I believe he runs from us on Sundays.
I believe that's accurate, yeah. Um, Mr. Johnson, uh, I, I think that angled parking is a good idea. Our problem is gonna be the cost of it. Concrete is not cheap nowadays. So, Mr. Johnson, can you tell us what, how citizens can submit applications to the traffic committee for permit parking?
I thought you were gonna go a different direction with this. I was mentally trying to calculate what it was gonna cost to put an angled park. Yeah, there's a procedure, I can't give you all of the details of it, but residents can petition to the traffic committee. You get the petition forms through the engineering department, they'll actually provide you with the forms to request that it be switched to permit parking on the street.
Or parking switched to the other side of the street, you can make recommendations and the traffic committee will evaluate it.
They may put just the permit parking on one side of the street and leave the other side open. But that's always done on a request initiated by the residents, it's not something that they do on their own.
And that involves a petition, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes, and the petition forms, they can get through the engineering department.
So, go, if, if you're in, in this neighborhood between, before four-thirty one day, pop in and go to the engineering department desk and you can pick up one of those forms. Commissioner Donigan?
Oh, thank you. Yes, I have to save, since I'm home most of the time now working, that noise would probably drive me bonkers. But I will, I promise I will go and listen, hang out and listen because I will be at the Parks and Rec meeting. You know, I grew up here and most of our parks were passive and people, kids went and played and, but there was, we had, I think we had, the programming was maybe, you know, like summer camp for kids. And then we built the tennis courts, but there was no actual programming for tennis, people just went and played tennis. Although a lot of them actually didn't and as you know, a lot of them are never used. And so, when you said, when you were talking about our parks being, or pickleball being programmed, I wondered, there's soccer, obviously, we play soccer, but we play soccer a short amount of time given, in a given year. Pickleball season is until there's snow, I would assume.
Well, for accuracy, they put up the nets. Our park cleanup is the last Saturday in April, that's when the nets go up and they will be taken down October thirty-first. So it's six months on, six months off.
So, so that's a long time for programming. So do we have other parks who, that are designated as active as opposed to passive? Where we've said, well, this is a really good place to have loud, continuous activities and this park is not? I mean, do we have, and I haven't been paying attention over the years, criteria for that? Or does it just seem like a good place or, I mean, so is there that kind of consideration?
That's a very good observation and, and there is, but it, and it is based on staff and, and the quality. And I'll, and I'll go with soccer on this one. We try to rotate, because there's so many soccer fields, eighteen soccer fields. We have to put soccer fields at some of our smaller parks because it, it just tears up the grass, so we have to rotate them. So, for instance, at Warden, J C, Memorial, you know, those are our community parks. Those we can put tons of activities. I mean, J C has three picnic shelters, frisbee golf, sand volleyball and three baseball fields. So that's our active park as well as Warden and Memorial. But we do, like, for instance, when I was driving here tonight at Optimus Park on Rochester Road, we have a soccer field right there. There's no parking lot and again, it's the same, the same challenges. They park up and down those side streets for all those soccer games during the week and then all day on Saturday and noon to five on Sunday, but it is a shorter season. So Marx Park is another one where we put a soccer field and the residents call and say, hey. And what we tell them is, okay, we, we really need the smaller parks in the spring because we also have baseball. Then in the fall, we try to put them at the larger parks so as not to infringe on the smaller parks, okay?
But, but in terms of programming then, so there's soccer, which is a short period of time, and pickleball. And you mentioned basketball, do we have programmed basketball or is that just kind of random?
We don't program any, like basketball, it's just strictly a drop-in sport, just like tennis is. I mean, we do have a love-all tennis, we do have a tennis program, but it's at Warden Park where we have six courts. That's where the soccer bubble is. Soccer bubble will be going up November first, comes down April thirtieth and then it turns back into a tennis facility.
So this is really the only program we have in the park outside of soccer?
At?
Any park?
Well, and then baseball and softball.
Well, okay.
But, yeah, but, but the rotation or the criteria that you were alluding to.
Right.
Yeah, you know, we do infringe on the smaller parks for soccer because soccer is probably our, our largest youth program.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Douglas?
Well, before I say what I was going to say, I would ask, I mean, we talk about doing, you know, permit parking here or at any park. I mean, do we not, do we have the same kind of complaints at other parks where people come to the traffic committee and say, I want permit parking because these soccer families are parking on my street? I mean, at what point do, does that, you know, do we reach a point where there's no parking anywhere near those parks? Because everybody's got permit parking. I mean, we are, we are blessed, I think, with neighborhood parks and that's an important selling point for our city. People love that, having neighborhood parks. And with that, I mean, it's a, you know, you've got to balance that, you know, the demand and the loveliness of having a neighborhood park. And I'm gonna, I'm like gonna out myself here and say, I play pickleball, don't hate me. And it's a wonderful sport for, let us say, older people because it's not as, it's not as much running around, it's much more of a finesse and reflexes game. And as we look at our, I don't know, I play this card all the time, but as we look at a community where people are aging, we need to look for the kinds of activities that will help, help them stay fit and healthy and active. And I know we need to balance the demands of the neighborhood with the demands of pickleball, but I'm just gonna say, let's make sure we keep pickleball in our community for the people who want it.
Commissioner Bolton?
Yes, a question, there seem, it says six to eight hours, seven days a week for pickleball. It seems like a lot of players, I know you also mentioned the dog park. Is there a limit on the number of those passes to get into the dog park? Is there a set limit or is there just unlimited amount of people can just go there?
We originally, when we first started out, we thought if we got over five hundred passes, we would have a problem because it's like joining in a health fitness. Everybody goes in the beginning and then things kind of slow down or die down. And that's kind of how, we peaked at one point with the dog park and three hundred now. And, and they've kind of leveled off now. But, and again, the busiest times again for the dog park, Saturdays and Sundays, you know. And because people come and go and a lot of people go there for a half hour, run their dog and then leave. So we have not had an overcrowding issue at the dog park. And we are open from nine A M. to nine P M. at Mark Twain also. And I would say the busiest times again are Saturday and Sunday mornings.
Yeah, just brought that up to see if there was, I mean, if you had limited there, maybe you can limit to the pickleballers, but it doesn't appear to be the case. I get, and it says that it's exclusive for pickleballers, so, I mean, is there, and there seems to be certain people arriving. I mean, are they scheduled to play on these pickleball courts? Or I haven't played the game, but if I want to get a pickleball paddle, could I just go over there and start playing? Or how does it work?
Yeah, it, it's an open, outdoor, free facility, just like our basketball courts are, our tennis courts and our pickleball courts. Where between park hours of nine to nine, you can play there and it is a free. We, when they move indoors to the Salter Center where we have six indoor courts, they do pay for that because we do have the expenses, the lighting, the heat, things of that nature. But they do play there from eleven to three, Monday through Friday. But what we've done there is, there's, the nighttime activities are for the Boys and Girls Club and for the Parks and Rec programs. Basketball, volleyball, gym rentals, things of that nature. So they're, they're very, their, their hours are dictated by what was already there. And with the Boys and Girls Club using one gym and the City of Parks and Rec Department using the other gym, our existing programs, you know, they would love to have evenings at Salter and as long as I'm here, they won't because we have successful programs in the gymnasium that are for the kids and the residents and, and seniors too. So, and we go seven days a week also at the Salter Center for all programs, not just pickleball. But they go four or five hours a day, Monday through Friday, at the Salter Center.
So I'm glad some of these issues are gonna be addressed at the Parks and Rec. They can go there and see if we can come up with some, some solutions to some of these. I think we've talked about additional parking, so I think there is gonna, it looks like there's gonna be a plan in place to try to address some of these issues. And I'm sure if they're not addressed at the Parks and Rec, we hopefully will hear back from you either at the public comm or in the email. So we can address some of these concerns. I'm glad to hear that this park is on the list of, to get playground equipment because it's kind of going back in time when you go there based upon some of the other playground equipment we have in the city. Some of this rusted spider and this, these other slides are just something you'd play if you were living, growing up in the seventies, early eighties. So it's different, so you, kids like to go there, but time for change there, so. Good luck.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dubbuck?
Just one last question, is, do you know if Upton is in a CDG eligible area?
Whittier Park's parking lot was paid for with block grant funds.
Right.
Upton, I'll, I'm gonna check tomorrow morning at eight A M., so.
Okay.
And I'll talk to Mr. Murphy.
Probably not. We'll see.
My guess is no. My guess is no, so. But I will talk with Mr. Murphy in the morning.
Okay, thanks.
I guess I'll just add to the conversation, just to try to recap so everybody's clear what the next steps are. First, I appreciate everyone coming out, okay? We can't solve problems unless we're aware of them, right? And I know we did receive a letter and we're glad you came out here to explain it to us more in person. There's gonna be a Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting on the fifth. And they, I used to serve on that committee, I know some of us up here, I know Commissioner Bolton has as well and Commissioner Donigan serves on that committee. And they do have the ability to think creatively and make some recommendations to us. It's always a balance in the community, right? You know, we're trying to, you know, have programming for people who want, you know, this activity, which really makes sense. But at the same time, you know, you don't want to have something that is an unreasonable burden to neighbors. And so it's always a journey, you know, if pickleball had been around for three hundred years, you know, we'd probably have it all figured out. So I think what I'm curious to hear about when we come back on the fifth is really the, the noise reduction, the parking. We need to get some creative ideas out here, we need to look at what some of these elements cost. If there's some small things here that, you know, just aren't being managed, let's take a look. You know, if the park's not open to people to, or the pickleball courts aren't open for people at reasonable times for the neighbors to play, et cetera, then okay, I mean, it's not a conspiracy, it's just we gotta be aware and figure it out and, and move forward. So, you know, I will say, on the bright note, you know, we're coming out of the Great Recession here just to, you know, ten years ago, but cities really saw a delayed impact. And we got well over fifty amazing parks in this community. And I can tell you, we're starting to see, or you're starting to see investment into our parks. At first, we had to take care of public safety. So we can't just always invest, take the entire budget and upgrade our parks and then next year, take our budget and, you know, upgrade something else. So it's always a balance, but I'm hopeful and optimistic that we're gonna be able to find some opportunities here with the, with the play structure. I know we've been for about ten, twelve years, Mr. Gazzetti, we didn't, I mean, for our time. I think, I think when I was first elected to this commission in two thousand and eleven, you know, the newest playground instruction Royal Oak was, what, twelve years old and it was from a school? So we've made a concerted effort, we've made it a priority, we've made it a focus. And you're seeing two or three of these things go in every year. And so I'm excited to, to see that, you know, we're making a lot of progress on this front. So, sorry, your park hasn't, you know, we had some other much worse situations we addressed and took care of. But, you know, it, you're very reasonable, you came up here, you understand, you know, the balance that needs to take place. And, you know, we gotta find a reasonable solution here. I think the sound would drive me nuts too, so that's what I'm most concerned about. So I look forward to what the Parks and, right, we're not pushing you off, but we're really just trying to make sure the people that, you know, have a great insight into this can, can bring some recommendations back here. And the good news is the meeting's only, you know, October fifth, which isn't too far away. And we have some time over the winter time to, to figure this out and, and try some things. So I think this commission here looks that we're willing to work with the residents, we're willing to work with the pickleballers. We're hopeful that we can find a reasonable solution where everybody gives, everybody takes and everybody's happy. So, Mr. Gazzetti, do you feel comfortable with the direction moving forward or do you need any sort of direction?
Nope, we all have the information on the, the screen, the sound proof, and it's not, the sound reduction screening. I still have all that information, I'll make that available to the residents as well as the Parks and Rec Board and the, and, and the balls that we talked about. But again, that, that isn't, it's a, just a small degree of, of solving the problem. So, yep, I, I'm confident with the direction.
So, I'm thinking, I mean, I want to put a firm timeline on it, but, you know, given the fact that the season's gonna close out here, the sense of urgency is slowing down as it, one wouldn't guess as it's getting colder. I can't say that it's getting colder, that would be untrue, but, you know, statistically, it should be getting colder. So I'm thinking in the next month or two or three, depending on, you know, what takes place at the Parks and Rec Committee, what more information they need, what additional ideas. But I would think before we start the next pickleball session here, before the ground starts to thaw, we can have a report back to this body so we can make sure we can give some direction, if that's all right? Perfect, perfect. All right, anything more on pickleball? I thought I'd say pickleball so many times in one night. Not sure how I feel about that. All right, thank you, Mr. Gazzetti.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you for coming out tonight. Okay, that brings us to item number seven, request to extend exclusive development period six hundred South Main Street. Mr. Fenton?
Good evening, Mayor Fournier, members of the City Commission. In May of this year, the City Commission granted Burton Katzman Corp. Partners' request to be designated the preferred developer of six hundred South Main Street. That designation expires today and as such, they are seeking an additional ninety-day extension of that period. There has been significant work done with this project since May. Their site plan for the building, which is approximately seventy-seven thousand square feet of office and nineteen thousand square feet of first floor retail and including a deck with four hundred and twenty-eight parking spaces, of which one hundred and fifty-five would be available to the public. That is actually the parking space count for six hundred Main. That received site plan approval in July. Last week, the D D A had a discussion on a draft TIF reimbursement agreement. Burton Katzman has been in contact with the D D A Business Marketing Committee and working through that process most of the summer. Draft development agreement was submitted to the city, we're currently reviewing that right now as well. And early conversations have begun with the M E D C to gauge the M E D C's potential interest in contributing to the project. So I do see that there are members of the Burton Katzman team, Mr. Goss, Mr. Pavone and Mr. Arwood, welcome to Royal Oak. They're here to answer any additional questions you may have of them.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Fenton at the moment? Hey, gentlemen, would you like a few words?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, nice to see you again. Thank you, Mr. Fenton, that was pretty much what I was gonna say, but you, you did a nice job. Of course, I'm Larry Goss, partner at Burton Katzman, John Pavone's with me, who's our development partner. And as Mr. Fenton mentioned, Mr. Steve Arwood, who is now the C E O of Miller Canfield Consulting. Some of you may recognize him from being the former C E O of the M E D C. So happy that Mr. Arwood has joined our team. We are here tonight before you to report on the status of the project, which Mr. Fenton covered pretty well, but we have a few things to add. And to request a little bit more time to complete the process that is underway. We do think we've made significant progress since we were before you. At our last meeting, you put us on notice clearly that we needed to make significant progress if we were to appear before you again and ask for any additional time. So we've been busy, we heard you loud and clear. And as Mr. Fenton mentioned, in, on July eleventh, we received unanimous approval of the site plan. And again, it's a hundred and one thousand square foot landmark mixed-use building. And it has retail on both Main Street and Sixth Street, approximately nineteen thousand seven hundred square feet. We would make note, as Mr. Fenton mentioned, it's connected to a four hundred and twenty-eight space parking deck, of which through the negotiations with the D D A Marketing Committee, a hundred of which through the negotiations with the DDA Marketing Committee, 155 spaces, the current number of spaces on the surface parking lot would be reserved for transient parking, which does address the comment that was made earlier about, will the seniors still have a place to park? Essentially, the public will still have the same 155 spaces that they had, and we are adding another 273 spaces to the deck, a total of 428 that would be available in the evenings and on weekends. We did meet with the DDA, and we think we're very close to a mutually acceptable reimbursement agreement. At the last meeting last week, there were a few members of the DDA that wanted to have a little bit more time to review the final version, and what we heard was that they had plans to vote on the agreement up or down on their October 18th meeting. But we are, I think we've made very good progress there, and we're optimistic that that agreement looks like it's near finalization. The draft development agreement has been in, essentially, kind of limbo until the DDA agreement was resolved. They were sort of handled sequentially with the city attorney, and so we're anxious to get back and finalize the development agreement terms. We did have a draft that was fairly well flushed out, but there were a few items related specifically to how the DDA handled the project that have to be incorporated into the development agreement, and then we obviously need to bring that back to this body and hopefully move that forward as well. We've also had three top general contractors provide estimates on the project, just so you know, we're keeping track of the budgets, and we're all, we're feeling pretty good, they're all very similar in terms of the costs there. Mentioned that we have added Mr. Arwood, very fortunate to have him on our team now, and Steve, maybe you could just say a word or two about the conversations we're having? We're not gonna say a lot, but...
Sure. Good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight. We have met with the MEDC, their initial conversations. I would say that, at this point, in all frankness, you know, MEDC is certainly looking at the project, but also looking, as they do any project, you know, the, the amount of money to go across the state for various projects like this, of course, is limited. But I would say the conversations are positive, but it will take a little time, since it's initially there, to work out the right kind of partnership for them to get involved in this project if they can. But I feel optimistic at this point that continued conversations will lead us somewhere relatively soon, so, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. We continue to have serious interest from our anchor tenant. I mentioned to you at the last meeting, a local financial services firm as a possible anchor tenant, and we've actually recently been approached by another well-known firm. Unfortunately, again, I'm not permitted to give you their name, but it's a, it's a firm that I know you would all love to have in, in Royal Oak. They're not, not currently in Royal Oak as an anchor tenant, and so we do have very strong interest from both office and retail tenants for the project. As you might imagine, it's been a little difficult to finalize discussions with any potential tenants until we have these agreements in place and we can really lock down the economics. Lastly, we do have a term sheet from an interested bank, associated bank, who we've done business with in the past. So we're already getting quotes now from lenders to provide the debt portion of the project. Obviously, that'll be part of the capital stack, but it's nice to see that the financial institutions are very excited to be a part of this project as well. So, given all the momentum that we've achieved, and in particular, the status of the reimbursement agreement with the, and the development agreement, we obviously respectfully ask that you give us a little bit more time to complete these negotiations. We think we've made excellent progress, and we're excited to try to wrap up this stage of the, of the process and hopefully kick this project off at the beginning of the year. So we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for the petitioners. Mr. Douglas.
Yes, in terms of MEDC funding, what are some of the criteria that they will be looking at to consider this project? Royal Oak has participated in some of the economic development initiatives that have been driven by the MEDC and Oakland County. Have we positioned ourselves correctly to qualify for consideration? Furthermore, the, the agreement that was passed by the legislature and signed by the governor here within the past, what, six weeks? That is a program of tax incentives, do we qualify for that? That is, you seem to kind of backpedal a little bit on our eligibility, and I want to make sure we're doing everything we can do to position ourselves to be eligible.
Well, if you're talking about the transformational brownfield program, no, that would not qualify into this program. So what we're talking to the MEDC about is traditional programming through the Community Redevelopment Program primarily. Royal Oak is, is a community that, you know, and I say this in a good way, it doesn't meet a lot of the criteria for a lot of the program funding, you know, for blight, for distressed community, core community funding. So it's really to, to work with these gentlemen and MEDC to find kind of a non-traditional way to get that type of assistance in this type of project. It has been done before. So really, it's, how do the numbers look? Is it a project that they're comfortable with? Are, are the returns right? It's, it's just a matter of discussion, really, with the MEDC.
So, if I may continue, what about placemaking? I mean, there was a time when participation in placemaking programs was important consideration in state funding. My recollection is that Royal Oak, I mean, has participated in those programs, does that get us any points or credit at all?
Well, I think the interesting thing about the project, it's a very nice project. I mean, it meets those criterias of infill, brownfield, placemaking, walkability, connectivity, parking. I, I think the project checks all those boxes. So it's really a matter of, you know, everything that the, the state does through the strategic fund on these types of programs is a negotiated, you know, program with the city, the developer, and the state. So, again, those, those conversations have started, but it's the right type of project to have those conversations about.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Polton. I think, if I may, may I just add, we, we sort of took a page from the Trailhead Project, which did receive a letter from the MEDC, a quote, to provide assistance on the capital stack. And frankly, we checked the very same boxes that, that they checked when they applied to the MEDC, which gave us comfort that we were on the right track.
Thank you.
Mr. Polton.
You mentioned you have several tenants that you're talking to, or at least excited about the prospect of coming to Royal Oak. I mean, what do you, I mean, you, I don't want to hear, know who they are, but, I mean, this pro, we started in January 2016, it's still ongoing, I mean, what are you telling these tenants? I mean, they must have, if they don't own the buildings, they have leases, so you must tell them, oh, we're gonna break ground when?
Well, we've talked with you about the window of development, so they're all essentially prepared to either, if we, if we're able to start before the May deadline, if you recall, we were given an opportunity to start the project before May 30th, I think was the date, or else we had to wait until after Labor Day to start the project. So at the moment, we're hoping that we can start the project before that May date comes, and that's the timetable that we're working with them on.
And you met, based upon this letter, you met with the MEDC on September 19th. Is it just initial conversation, or you present, and they're gonna make a decision? If so, when are they gonna make a decision?
Well, there were several meetings with representatives of the MEDC that have taken place over many months, some right here at Royal Oak, and representatives from the MEDC came here. This last meeting, Steve arranged at the MEDC office, and so we went there and made presentations there. As far as their timetable, frankly, I don't know if we have a set timetable on when they have, have in mind, but they have just asked to start negotiations in earnest with the city. I think that email was sent to Mr. Fenton just last week, to, that they've had initial positive response from their group, and they would like to sit down now and see if we can hammer out something with everyone.
Okay. Because I'm glad you mentioned there were some other meetings, because it appears as though there was just a meeting on September 19th.
That was just the last.
And that was six days before the expiration of the exclusivity agreement.
That was probably the fourth meeting with representatives from the MEDC. We've been kind of keeping them in, in the hunt. You also, frankly, can't really go to the MEDC until you've got your site plan approved and you're, you're well down the road. So we were continuing to work with them, fleshing out ideas, but that was probably the fourth meeting with the MEDC, the last one just being recently.
Okay. Yeah, because I was gonna ask that, because it was approval on July 11th, and I thought, I didn't, I thought they met more than every couple of months.
Yeah, no, I think our initial meetings might have been as early as January of this year here in the city of Royal Oak, and Mr. Fenton participated in those as well.
In regards to a potential mixed-use office anchored building?
Yes.
We had meetings with them even a year prior, when we were proposing.
Looking at the residential.
Above the structure.
Right.
So they're familiar with the site.
They've been riding along with us for quite some time. Now we're ready to make some, hopefully, commitments.
You're just seeking another 90-day extension?
Correct.
More than that?
Well, we'd really like to see if, you know, we think that the documents are, are close enough that we don't want to ask for too much, frankly, but we, we do think that within 90 days, hopefully, we can knock off the DDA agreement, the development agreement, and maybe be, you know, down the road with the MEDC. I don't know if they'll have an answer for us, but we'd like to at least get the development agreement and the, and the DDA reimbursement agreement finalized. We think that's, gives us enough time to do those.
Okay, it sounds like it, so maybe this would be the final extension?
I hope so, yes, that's the plan.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Marley.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Fenton, have we had any appraisals done on this lot?
Yes, we, we appraised all of our surface parking lots. I don't have my file in front of me, I know that the fair market value for the land is what has been proposed in the development agreement that Burton Katzman would pay.
That essentially answers my question.
It is, yeah, it's, it's about a million dollars.
So you are in negotiations with the DDA for a TIF reimbursement agreement, you are meeting with MEDC. Do you have any plans to come back to us, given what used to be on the site, and apply for brownfield credits?
Well, no, I don't think so. I, I think, I think the TIF reimbursement agreement is, is the way we're planning on going for this. But, by the way, the fact that it is a brownfield, a facility that we're redeveloping, is a good box to check with the MEDC.
And what happens to this proposal, to this project, if the negotiations with the DDA fall through, and you can't come up with a TIF agreement?
The project's...
That would kill the project.
We'll remove ourselves from the project and step aside.
So you, you made reference to it before about the hard time you got at the last meeting. I, I looked it up, I looked it up, the first time I met with you guys was December 2015. That's almost two years ago. So I'm, there's no motion on the table yet, but I'm a little bit struggling. I know you guys said you needed to make some significant progress, and you've, you've made some good progress. I'm, I'm gonna listen to the rest of the conversation up here before I make up my mind.
If I may respond, I, I looked up when the Trailhead Project started, it was five years ago, and they're now under construction, so it only took about five years to get going. We hope it won't take that long for our project, but these projects are complicated, particularly complicated because the city is not using its bonding authority to create the parking deck, so we've taken that responsibility on to try to overcome that. It's added a degree of difficulty that some developers didn't have to contend with, but nevertheless, we think we're nearly at the goal line, and we, we hope we have your support.
I will say, though, we're not discussing the development agreement tonight, but for me, at this point, I don't even know if I'll still be on the commission when that comes back to us, but I would suggest to my fellow commissioners that we might look at not breaking ground until after Labor Day of next year, and to you gentlemen as well.
Okay. Any other questions for the petitioners? Mr. Dubbuck.
You said that you had negotiated, basically, to make it parking-neutral with regard to the park, the daytime parking that we already have there, was there, was there a push toward making it actually parking-positive for daytime parking?
There were conversations about that. We, frankly, the, the increase to 428 spaces for the peak hours of evenings and weekends was kind of the, the balance on that. The larger the deck gets, the higher the hurdle that we have to try to overcome, so we've tasked ourselves with trying to replace all 155 spaces for transient parking, and that's where the conversations are right now.
And can you clarify, and so, we've done several extensions, but what does your, what does your timing look like from here on out?
Well, again, hopefully, we'll have both the DDA and the development agreement wrapped up within this extended 90-day period. The development agreement states that there is some additional time allowed for us to break ground prior to May, I believe it's May 30th, but I could be a little off on that date, and if we, if we don't, if, if that, if that language stays in the agreement, we would try to hit that date. If not, we'll have to sit still until after the Arts Beats and Eats Festival and start in September.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, gentlemen, we'll call you back up if we have more.
Thank you very much. So, I'm kind of falling into Commissioner Marley's realm over here as well, and I think last time we talked, you know, I really struggled with doing another extension, and liked the project, fully supportive at planning, like you guys. But, you know, for me, the one thing I'm struggling with is, you know, getting over this hump after more than, almost two years. Mr. Gillum, if we don't continue the exclusive development agreement, does that prohibit the city or the petitioner from continuing to work on the project? It just means it's not exclusive anymore, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So it's not a denial, by any means, it's just if we vote no, you know, there's no denial or, or desire not to have this project that looks very good on paper. But, you know, again, my issue is, I feel like we're going another 90 days, every 90 days, every 90 days, and I think I really struggle with that, you know, from a governing perspective and as a negotiating party here. So those are my thoughts, I may be persuaded by my colleagues up here, but, you know, I'd like to hear what others have to say. Commissioner Dubbuck.
Sure. So I'm act, I'm starting to get a little concerned just with phasing, considering, you know, the other projects that, that we've now committed to coming online, and that's why I want a clear view to what timing looks like. You know, when we build our, the new parking deck as part of the Civic Center Project, I would want to ensure that that's up and running before we take a Sixth Street parking lot offline. I, I just don't even think that it's feasible for us to have both those lots offline at the same time. So I, I want a clear understanding of, of what this timing looks like and how this extension plays into it, and to what extent, I guess, the petitioner is willing to work with the city on that timing to make sure that we're proceeding thoughtfully and strategically with all the balls that we have in the air right now. I don't think we can look at, you know, this one project in isolation, considering all the changes that we're making right now.
I guess that was what I was going to ask about, was, you know, how do we, you know, we're looking at a big chunk of construction with the Civic Center Project, not just the parking deck, but the general chaos and, and management of traffic and communication around the city, and, I mean, it seems like this project will hit right about the same time that the project that we approved here at our last meeting will be heating up, and do we have just the capacity to deal with all of that at once? And I'm not sure if that's a Mr. Fenton question or a Mr. Johnson question, but it's a question.
I would add, certainly, I've heard concern about timing from both the DDA and internal city staff as we're looking at the staging and phasing of the Civic Center Project. You know, and discussing this with council, it's really best addressed in the development agreement, and we haven't had those conversations, frankly, with the commission until tonight, and then taking it back to the development team. I anticipate, if the 90-day extension is, is approved, that will probably be the, the number-one issue for us to negotiate with the developer, because a lot of the issues that were raised about this project have actually already been solved in terms of purchase price and, and some other things, so. We're cognizant of it, I don't really have the direction on what would be permissible or what would be the best-case scenario for when that project could break ground, and then whether that works for them as well. That's what would happen over the next 90 days.
Question approved.
So if I can just continue. I mean, my observation about the 90-day agreement is, I mean, I don't mind extending it, only because I don't see us, I mean, I think it would, we'd be probably better off not actively marketing it to another prospect, because, I mean, I would think we might be well-served to keep that.
we might be well-served to keep that, I mean, we'll honor the, the work that they've done if indeed they pull it all together. But I guess I'm not worried about going after other prospects for that site if we don't extend their agreement.
Commissioner Perush?
If we were not going to extend the agreement, would that jeopardize their ability to work with MEDC?
That's why I stepped back up.
Yeah. Yeah, I would think so too. I think that if we, if we don't extend it, not only is MEDC gone, but I think their, a lot of their potential tenants are also out the window. So that's the risk we have. I mean, I, I really think if we don't extend the exclusivity agreement, much as we are uncomfortable with extending, 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 we might as well just kiss off this project because they're not going to be able to get the types of things that they need. If they're not going to get prospective tenants, they're not going to get financing, and certainly they're not going to get MEDC's participation. They will not get another meeting.
Commissioner Donigan?
I agree with Commissioner Perush. That's it, whatever she said. I agree with that. Very important.
Commissioner Dubak?
Yeah, just to, you know, hone in on that point that I'm, I'm okay with an extension to continue the negotiations, but I would make sure the petitioner's aware that, you know, given the context of everything that we have going on, we're probably going to need some leeway and some concessions if we're going to move forward. And I think the project in isolation is really, really exciting, but we have to consider what's in the best interest of the city going forward, both with the parking pinch, the construction chaos, preservation of our premier festival, which just had a, a great year in the midst of all these different moving pieces. So, you know, we're gonna continue this negotiation in good faith, understanding that we've got a lot of balls in the air that we're gonna have to, to make sure that we're moving, again, responsibly and strategically on any of these, if, if we're gonna move forward with this project.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Douglas?
I guess I'm prepared to move approval of the motion to extend this development period for another 90 days.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas, supported by Commissioner Perush. Commissioner Douglas?
That's all.
Okay, that's all. Any other further discussion? Mr. Marley?
Yeah, one more question pop into my head, if you guys don't mind. Can you, this might be a little bit early, but given that we're coming up on a real development agreement, potentially, can you tell us what sort of green elements you might be incorporating into the, the design of the building?
We did have our architects, Lord X. Sargent, put together a, a whole list of opportunities that we can bring to the project that are sustainable and, and green. I frankly can't quote them to you over, you know, at the, at the moment, but we know that that's an important aspect of the city of Royloke and, and this commission in particular. So we're making a point of focusing on those construction elements where we can. I wish I could be more detailed with you, but we understand it's a, it's an important part of your, your focus now.
And I'm looking at a rendering of the building right now. It's four stories tall. I thought, wasn't it five originally when we met a couple of years ago?
No, it's always been four, retail on the first floor and then three floors above.
Okay. What's changed though is there, there's no residential?
Correct. It's, it's office now.
And the way, I don't want to get too into the weeds on this, but the way you guys build buildings, this, there's no room for expansion upwards after this, correct?
Most likely not. Most likely not.
Those are my only questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Polden?
Yeah, a question. I, I think you're building a, oh, by the Silverdome, do you guys have a Burton Castman building up there?
Correct.
Now, how long did the process take for you to start the development there?
Well, it's simpler because we just bought the property and went in for site plan approval and built the building. So the whole process there was probably 18 to 20 months. The building itself, just the vertical construction, is about nine months. But that, again, that's a light industrial building that's basically, you know, concrete panels going up. It's not nearly as complicated as a mixed-use development.
You didn't seek, did you seek any incentive from the city or from the state on that project?
No.
You just bought the property?
Different, different market entirely.
Oh, yes. I agree with you on that. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Dubak?
Actually, just one last thing to Commissioner Marley's point regarding, you know, green elements, the building, green infrastructure. I would just highly encourage you to, to explore that to the greatest extent you can. There's gonna be a lot of pressure on the city and this body with everything we have going on. And I think it's, would both of you to make it too good to say no to in a final agreement. And I, I think it being as green as possible would be a, a huge part of that.
We'll make sure that's focused.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I guess for me, I'm in a tough spot because, you know, certainly I don't see us working with another entity in the next 90 days due to some of the scheduling things we talked about and some of the things that we'd have to work out in inevitable development agreement. But at the same time, I really struggle with the fact that this has taken several different extensions. But what I heard tonight were very specific things. I heard tonight that you have meetings with the MEDC and that this project is dependent on that. You have meetings with the DDA and you have to shore up an agreement with them related to TIF, and those are very specific. And you've also stated that within 90 days, you'll be able to accomplish those things. And you've also said that if those things don't happen, the project's a no-go from your side because you simply can't make money on it. Is that a, did I over or under characterize your statements?
That's accurate.
That's accurate? Okay. So although the principal person in me is pushing to say no more extensions because it rewards, you know, dragging things out for whatever reason that things may have been dragged out, but the practical person in me says, you know, there's no harm to the city at this point based on the specific things you discussed here in the, to the public body and the public that you hope to accomplish in 90 days. I still want to be friends, but come 90 days from now, if those things haven't been accomplished, you know, I don't have to have any discussion here. You'll know my vote's no. Understood? I'm not trying to put down the, I think it's important to be transparent, just with everyone, so you know where at least my head's at. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
Okay, the motion passes. Okay, this brings us to item number eight, confirmation of city manager's appointment to the downtown development authority.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was necessary for Amanda Page to resign her position on the DDA because she moved her firm outside of the DDA district when she lost her lease in a building within the district. In looking for another candidate, I was very much trying to find someone similar. Number one, I wanted a female candidate because the DDA is decidedly run by a bunch of old men, and I'm one of them. I also wanted somebody who was not coming from retail or restaurant because we've already got two retailers, we've already got two restaurateurs on the DDA. We really wanted to bring somebody that comes from an office perspective, a user of office space within the DDA. And we found somebody who we think meets this exceptionally well in Michelle Dunskey Adams. She also will greatly reduce the average age of the DDA members. So she'll bring a more youthful view. So I have appointed Ms. Adams and I'm requesting the city commission confirm that appointment.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Johnson? Commissioner Douglas?
I'll move the appointment.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas, supported by Commissioner Perush. Further discussion?
Yes.
Oh, oh, Commissioner Perush, didn't see it there, sorry.
Mr. Johnson, you may not have the answer to this, but I know another attorney, Christopher Dunskey, who has recently retired, who's an extraordinary environmental attorney. And he, I know, has a daughter who also went to law school, who might just fit this age range. I'm just dying to know whether or not his, his back.
I do not know the answer to that.
This, it's, it's Chris's daughter. I have ways to find out. When I, when I saw the name, I'm like, oh my gosh, small world. Maybe, we'll see. That's it.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. All right, that brings us to item number nine, Commission for the Arts' request to designate Art Explored as public art.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and City Commission. This is one of two projects that's actually coming before you from the Commission for the Arts tonight. This is with regards to the annual Art Explored program, which has been a staple for the Commission for the Arts for a number of years now. This program has actually resulted in a number of pieces being placed throughout the downtown, some of which have remained in place on long-term loan. Examples are Aven and Shades on the VFW and the Whimsy of Wales over on Qdoba on Third Street. This year, the selection committee selected to extend the pieces from last year for another year and also added three pieces, two of which are sculptures that have now been installed. One is on the library lawn and one is at the corner of Fourth and Center. The third piece is an oil painting that will be, it's a reprint of an oil painting that we're looking at putting on the Royloke Transit Center. Because of the nature of this piece, it would need to be designated as public art and exempt from the sign ordinance. So that's what we're asking for.
Questions for Mr. Crispen? Commissioner Perush?
I'll move approval of this designation.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Perush, supported by Commissioner Dubak. Discussion?
It's gonna be cool.
It's pretty.
Yeah, it's very, very colorful.
Commissioner Dubak?
I'm just saying, as our representative of Commission for the Arts, you know, this, this project's been, you know, growing every year and I think it's really added to the flavor and, and, you know, excitement and beauty of our downtown. And so, great to see some new pieces coming up. And just as last spring, when we had one of Mayor Fornia's walks, we did a, a large walking tour of all the pieces downtown. I think a lot of folks were exposed to some, maybe they hadn't, hadn't caught their eye before. So I think we'll probably push on doing that again and make sure that we're left enough opportunities for residents to really explore the art that, that is popping up all over the cities is really cool to see.
Any other comments? I'll just quote Commissioner Perush. This is gonna be cool. So, really good program. Glad to see the progress. Thank you to the Commission for the Arts. Thank you, Mr. Crispen, for your effort. And excited to vote for this. So if there's no other discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, this brings us to item number 10, Commission for the Arts' recommendation, River Rouge Brewing Company Public Art.
Yeah, this is the project that actually Mr. Schuster during public comments spoke to. The Commission for the Arts is bringing forth the recommendation on this. It was presented to the Commission for the Arts for approval and recommendation on September 18th. The project is a mural on the east wall of the building at 406 East Fourth Street. The Commission for the Arts did declare the, or request that the project be declared public art. It was voted on unanimously. The petitioners are here tonight and do want to ma- make mention that the mural was painted on the building without prior approval. And this brought code enforcement into the, into the issue, prompting the owners to come to the Commission for the Arts for approval.
Any questions? Commissioner Dubak?
I'll move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion for approval by Commissioner Dubak, supported by Commissioner Perush. Discussion? Commissioner Dubak?
It's a, you know, this came before the Commission for the Arts under our new process, which I think the, the flap with code enforcement was really due to we need to socialize this with business owners a little bit more. That due to the new sign ordinance, we do have really rigid sign regulations, but someone can come with a proposal to the Commission for the Arts for a public art installation like a mural and, and they can recommend that it be declared public art and, and they can move forward. And the Commission for the Arts has actually been working hard to encourage more mural installations like this throughout the city. This one's, you know, really fun, further beautifying Fourth Street. So glad to see it. Hoping that we can make sure people are understanding the process a little bit better. And, you know, that's on us as well to make sure that we're putting it out there so business owners know to put these proposals to the Commission for the Arts. But we definitely encourage it, so.
Commissioner Perush?
First of all, I, I think the design is incredible. For those residents who don't have any idea what we're talking about and you don't, can't see a picture on your screen, I encourage you to drive down Fourth Street and see this. It's, it's the way that they have incorporated the, the, whatever those are, steam, well, not steam vents these days, but the ventilation tubes into the art design itself is, is extraordinarily creative. And I, I appreciate the fact that the gentleman earlier, you know, mentioned the potential hassle of having to go through the process and fill out the paperwork and go to meetings and all that. But on the other hand, the, the potential is always there that you're gonna get. If you didn't have any controls or any regulations whatsoever, you get somebody slapping something on the side of the building would be either offensive or unacceptable or ugly or not well-maintained. And so we really do want to maintain the artistic quality of what we have going up on the buildings as well as making sure that they are maintained and that they fit with the community. So that's why the, the ordinance was amended the way it is, to put those procedures in place. And yeah, it is a little bit of a hassle, but on the other hand, we just want to maintain good quality products within the city. And that's, that's about the only way we can do it.
So I asked Mr. Stensel to come up, just to speak quickly. I know we got the motion on the table, but I'll take mayoral privilege here. Mr. Stensel, do you want to kind of talk a little bit about the mural before we vote on it?
Good evening, thank you, commissioners. Yes, this was a, a mural that we wanted to put in to beautify the area. It was just a gray wall and being a small business, we weren't really, we didn't really understand the procedures. And so I, I do agree with you. I mean, there's, procedures are there to be followed and we apologize for, for doing this in a retro manner. If we do any more art, which we'd love to in the city, we'll definitely go through the procedure. But this is something that we feel passionate about, art. My background is, one, I worked in the movie industry before I moved back to Michigan and, and worked with a lot of artists. And my wife and I like to collect a lot of art. And Freddie Diaz is a, is a, not only locally known, he's nationally known and internationally known artist. And we felt really honored that he actually did that art for us here in Royloke. And a lot of people, we've had nothing but positive response from the artwork. People come by, take pictures, people comment it, they love it. I think there was some confusion on our part about the procedure and I'm glad we're able to come here tonight and, and go through the proper procedure to clear this up.
Okay, appreciate it.
Commissioner Marley?
I'm looking at this mural on the left side of it, which would be the south side of it. It looks like the central, the Michigan Central Train Depot?
It is, yes. Freddie's from southwest Detroit. He grew up down there and he's very passionate about spreading Detroit throughout, not only the metro area, but throughout the, you know, visions of it throughout the.
So that, that would put the north side of the bridge in the, in the mural on the Canadian side?
Yes.
Which is where the beer is being poured. But you guys only still brew Royloke beers, right?
That, that is correct. Although we do have a lot of people come over from, from Windsor and in Canada. We've had, I think we've had over 25 different, people from 25 different countries so far come into the, to the brewery. So we get a lot of people find out about us and, and come to the community. And so it's been our whole philosophy and what we've been doing since we started and the commission and the mayors have supported us has, has really worked out.
All right, thank you. I appreciate your time. Yeah, I'll just add, great mural to my neighborhood. Love looking at it, love walking by it, occasionally sit in front of it. And I think, you know, Ed and Martha are stand-up people. They do amazing job. You know, with the Supreme Court ruling coming down on, you know, what signs can and can't be, there's a lot of confusion up there. I think we've had hours of, I won't say debate, but poor Mr. Gillum over here has fielded not less than 6,922 questions, if I'm overestimating. And so, you know, we came back, we redid the ordinance. For those who don't know, maybe that might be listening, the Supreme Court ruled that you can't, if you, if, you can't read a sign, you can't look at it, you can't make judgment based on its content. And it took it to a level, you know, that, that, you know, had previously not really been accounted for. And so whenever something goes up in the And so whenever something goes up on the side of the building, we can't judge whether or not it's art or whether it's, you know, a sign for the business, et cetera. So that's why we put it through the process to make sure it's designated as art. We have a body look at it, and that's where we are here today. I think traditionally, you know, a year ago, two years ago, it wouldn't have been an issue just to put one of these on the side of the building and, and move forward. So everybody's learning, we're getting the awareness out there. Not only are we promoting these, we're going back, we're making sure everyone knows how to do it so we can see more of them. So everyone's patience here paid off, and we got a really awesome piece of artwork here on Fourth Street, which is an amazing creative corridor. So with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion passes. Thank you very much. All right, this brings us down to item number eleven, which is discussion of bicycle share program options. All right. Mr. Krizin, you're a busy man tonight.
Yes, sir. During the annual goal set, goal-setting session this year, the city commission identified improving mobility in and around the city as a goal for this fiscal year. One objective toward achieving this goal was to explore the development of a bike-share program. Over the last few months, the city manager's office has been researching options for a potential bike-share program. For those who don't know, a bike-share program offers the short-term use of bicycles to users at locations throughout a given area. The two most commonly used systems are the docked or stationed system or the stationless or dock, dockless station, uh, system. Station programs will utilize unmanned docking stations filled with rentable bikes, whereas a stationless system would not have and would be basically allowed to be parked virtually anywhere within the, the given area. Both of these would rely heavily on technology, often through apps on smartphones. Bike-share systems offer another option within a city's transportation network, often helping address that first and last mile connection for commuters. So this could potentially help expand the use of public transportation throughout the city should the city go this route. According to SMART, approximately 1,170 people use the Transit Center daily. So by adding bike-sharing, we may be able to, in fact, expand upon that. Prices to rent bikes vary by the locations. Different cities are charging different prices, but they're generally kept low. There's memberships for a day, a month, or even a year. Often, the first half hour or hour of a program is free. Oftentimes, municipalities will begin getting into this by doing a pilot program to collect information on operating costs, on ridership, and other aspects to look at the long-term success. Two of the major factors that affect the cost are obviously the size of the program and what company or vendor is being used to provide the bikes. Some of the most common ones right now are Zagster, B-Cycle, Spin and Shift Transit. Downtown Detroit's program right now is expecting to be at about 2 million startup and 1 million annually. But their program is at 420 bikes with 42 stations. That's the Mogo program that I think we've all seen. Many smaller communities throughout the country have and are continuing to begin doing bike-share programs, and they're gonna be using much fewer bikes and stations. One factor that's gonna correlate with bike-share and success is the infrastructure, the bike lane system for that municipality. Bike lanes are a key component to successful bike-share because people are gonna wanna use bikes if they feel safe. When coupled with bike-share, bike lanes can reduce traffic congestion and therefore reduce emissions for motor vehicles. Parks also with dedicated bike trails can enhance the possibility of success of a program. Successful bike-share operation, we've gotta be willing to invest in a strong system of bike infrastructure. Currently, east-west travel is relatively easy, especially with the addition of Fourth Street bike lanes. Currently, north-south travel is difficult, which is an identified issue and also one of the objectives to achieving this goal is addressing the north-south bike route, which should be taking place, I believe, during the summer of 2018 is when the construction should begin on that. Density of a municipality is another factor that can identif, that can contribute to the success of a bike-share program. And not just population density, but also how close businesses are, how walkable the town is. Also, the rental price, if you're pricing them too high, you're not gonna have as much success. Most programs are trying to get that for, that half-hour ride, so they often promote it by doing the first half-hour free. So bikes, also important to note is that bike-share programs seldom generate enough revenue to cover their costs. Typically, it's looked on as a service provided. But there are oftentimes grant funds that are available to help pay for these. Also, many municipalities go after sponsorship dollars. City of Dearborn has partnered with Beaumont for a pretty substantial amount of money for their program. Our city, Royal Oak, does have several of these features that would indicate we could be successful with a bike-share. The walkable thriving downtown, also the current demographics and the shifting towards the younger professional people working and living in our town. Also, the relatively high income and property values have been correlated with communities that have a successful bike-share program. So we're definitely on our way to creating a robust bicycling culture, which will help with this, but we'll need to continue, and the city's ride-on program is gonna be instrumental in helping that. So a couple different options to look at. The city of Port Huron this summer launched a bike-share program. They're another similar, similarly smaller city. And instead of the million dollars a year to operate like the city of Detroit's, they're looking at 36,000 per year. And they've been really successful with partnering with the regional transit system, the local community college, as well as the DDA. And they've been able to also leverage these partnerships to get a grant from MDOT. That grant from MDOT has covered a third of the cost of the program. Another option that we can look at at this point has to do with our location being right in the middle of a number of neighboring communities that could potentially partner with. If you look at us, Ferndale, Berkeley, and Birmingham, we're looking at about a 35-square-mile radius that would be very achievable to bike. And if you compare this to the area that is served by the Mogo system, it's very comparable. This potential option has certainly piqued interest at members of the Oakland County Commission. And they are certainly interested in further discussions. So this report was to give you guys some ideas and some information. This was just a summary of what was in the report, it was about a six-page report. So at this point, we're not completely looking for any real action, but we would like to see some direction on where you wanna go. And we recommend that maybe this gets delegated to the pedestrian bicycle safety subcommittee of the traffic committee.
Any questions? Commissioner Marley?
Thanks, Mayor. First, I'll make the motion as presented, to direct the Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Subcommittee to hold public discussions about bicycle sharing.
We have a motion by Commissioner Marley, supported by Commissioner Dubbuck.
Mr. Krizin, thanks for this, this thorough report, although I am guessing the grad assistant did most of that.
He did a good chunk of this. And presented it if he was still with us.
I really pushed this as part of our strategic plan for this year, and I'm glad to see, really happy to see this, this thorough and detailed report. Couple of things to point out, Port Huron does have a very effect, cost-effective program. They are about half the size, population-wise, of Royal Oak. And when I brought this up at the strategic, strategic planning session, I had a much more comprehensive network in mind. I, I live in the north end of the city, I live right by the, the high school, Kimball, as I like to call it. And I had, in, in my mind, it was a way for me to be able to buy one of these memberships and ride a bike downtown or to Clausen or to Berkeley, wherever it might be. So, you know, in, in thinking of where we might place these stations, I think we need to think a little more broadly, not just around downtown. Certainly around downtown and around the Transit Center, around the hotel. But you mentioned Beaumont is teamed up in Dearborn. So there, there, anyway, there are a number of several dozens of locations we could look at in Royal Oak. And taking a step further, you know, you lay out the different models here. I know Oakland County is very serious about investing in county-wide bike-share programs. So our cost, our, our share of the cost might be extremely low, especially if we're able to line up corporate partners like Beaumont or the zoo or, I don't know, Imagine or B-Dubs or whatever it might be. The school district, possibly. I know they catch a lot of stuff for not having busing, so maybe they, I have not brought this up with anyone on the school board, but, so forgive me for throwing them under the bus, pun intended. But maybe the school district would be interested in, in partnering with the program. Because, you know, as, as Mr. Krizin mentioned, we're coming up in October, for those of you who don't know, at one of our meetings in October, we'll, we'll have a recommendation coming before this body, a recommendation that was approved by the, the Bike and Pedestrian Safety Subcommittee and approved by the Traffic Committee for a major north-south bike route, which is, is pointed out in this report, an essential step to making these types of bike-share programs successful. And it's a, it's a, a route that is going to connect the south end from the zoo all the way up to our Clausen border. And it's also gonna connect to Ferndale's existing bike lane system at Campbell and where it turns into Hilton. So I just say all of this to say, I am very pleased with the progress being made here. I hope next month we'll approve this plan that passed the committee, the Subcommittee unanimously and the Traffic Committee unanimously. And that the, the sub, the Bike and Pedestrian Safety Subcommittee, sorry, that's a long name, can get to work on this quickly. I hope maybe even at our first meeting, Mr. Krizin, if you can get with Mr. Callahan, maybe we can have someone from Oakland County at that first meeting because I know that that committee is ready to hit the ground running. So, sorry, pretty verbose on that, but I'm, I'm very happy to make this motion and support it, and looking forward to keeping the wheels rolling on this.
Right. Commissioner Marley, do you have anything more to say? Any more puns? Okay, any further discussion on this one? Okay, I think it's pretty cool, we should be exploring this. I mean, we gotta think creative. You know, you always do what you always done, you always get what you always got. Here's an opportunity that, you know, can bring some fun to town, but also solve some of the, you know, important logistical issues we have, maybe some parking benefit. A lot of good things can come out of this, and, you know, with so much interest around the county and so many other examples that have proven to work out, we should be trying this too, so. With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Okay, that brings us to the end of the agenda tonight. Unless there's something more for the betterment of the people of Royal Oak, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mayor Proton Douglas?
The people's business being concluded for the evening, I move we adjourn.
A motion by Mayor Proton Douglas, is there support? Supported by Commissioner Marley. Any, any further discussion? All right, with none. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.